The clock, the magical hour. So I'll be ready with the camera then. All right, we'll start as we do usual. We'll stand up and after you stand up and.
My pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome out of this cold, cold night of guests and the cold week. So as we get started with our agenda, as we kind of remind ourselves of our, our vision and our mission, as we look through these events decisions, our vision inspiring all learners to be engaged and successful. Our mission to provide an enriching environment to meet the needs of all learners. So as we go through these agenda items, let's make sure we remember those, that, of our vision and mission. So. Been no changes to the agenda that you see in front of you. Will you see a motion for or for a vote?
Motion. Go ahead.
Jay, we'll go with you, Tom, as a second.
Second, there, motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing the delegates, we don't have any currently. So we'll move on to the consent items. Tom, anything you wanted to say? The board, you looked through the invoices?
Came in this morning, all invoices look good.
Okay, thank you. And you guys know you have the consent items in front of you for the weekend. If there's any questions?
All the financial statements are, are routine for this, this month. I will go through a short financial summary during my report, kind of highlighting some of those things I did last month as well.
What do we get the fireworks for?
That, that, that's, it's an in and out. It was for that first football game.
Oh, okay.
They were donated. The other invoice, the expenses was covered, but we just paid it directly in the checking accounts.
No, that's for the dedication of the football field.
Yeah. Thanks.
A motion to approve consent items.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I do have one question. What's a debrering machine?
Our laser and draping machine in the shop, we used, you know, burrs, sharp edges. This is a debrering machine that we used to smooth those. Use that, Perkins funny was used to.
Great. Must be a good one.
Yeah.
I think we all saw it, what, what is that? Good to know. All right, we're hearing further questions. During now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications to the board, we have none at this time. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
A couple of things, you know, this is a certainly a heavy legislative time of year. So I wanted to highlight some of the educational bills that have been introduced so far in Des Moines. Senate File 160, that was actually passed. That's the bill that requires all schools to offer full time in person option. I was contacted by some of our parents, some of our families. We have always offered that option. So it was no change to us and a family who was remote and they chose to that, they could continue to do that. Senate File 130 allows, this is also a COVID related bill for a board member to make more than $6,000, such as for substitute teacher, bus driver, food service worker, something like that. That has become a need in some districts with some staffing problems during this last school year.
Well, is that a permanent change or just a temporary?
I think that is, that, I believe that to be permanent.
Okay.
Senate File 159, this is the, the educational omnibus bill. It actually has multiple parts to it, including the expansion of charter schools, school vouchers, some of those things. That's, that's probably the most highlighted piece to that, that bill. What that bill says is if a child attends a school that is comprehensive, that would be the ESA designation. So the accountability, federal law, and there's only 34 schools in the state that actually have that designation. So if they're a kindergarten student or going to be a kindergarten student of one of those schools, then they could receive a voucher from the state and go to another district. Again, only 34 schools, none of our buildings are comprehensive. It, it wouldn't have any impact on us. That bill has not passed, it's still in discussion.
So is that like 34 districts or 34 separate buildings?
Thirty-four buildings. Maybe it's 19 districts actually. And there's a little over 10,000 students that that could possibly impact. At $5,400 is a lot more than 3 million allocated for it, but we'll, we'll see if that happens.
So the people that are concerned about our district, there's no really reason to be concerned about it?
The, the proposal as is, it would not affect any.
Do they, some of the people who've asked me questions or share their concerns about it, do they know that it doesn't affect our district?
But could it someday? If, if one of our schools, elementary schools, I mean.
If, if it would expand, yes, it could. And it wouldn't just be an elementary.
Right, I mean, I just said elementary, coming to school.
Middle school, could be anything. That's where it could impact us. I gave you guys the one proposal in our memo. If down the road this was expanded and we had two students per grade level who took advantage of this, that would be a $200,000 loss to the district. You know, again, two students per grade level wouldn't change our staffing, but at a loss of $200,000, that would change our staffing. So it certainly could have a significant impact if that was something that continued down the road.
Be the same, it'd be the same though now if somebody chose to leave our district and went to a private school. It'd still be a loss, correct?
Yeah, because we would not receive the dollars.
But it would just be state money that would be used for public education that would be now going to private schools.
Our loss would be the same, but there would be dollars that would follow that.
When Joe and I were talking about this and, you know, voicing our concerns or whatever. I mean, the only thing you can, you can obviously contact legislatures and let, you know, or, and let them know opinions, you know, and that's, but really the only thing we control is making our school the best place to be. We've talked about that before, being a destination place and, you know, I would hope that we are the best district out there that even if there was an option, which Todd, you bring that up, you know, is, is this the start of something more? That people would still choose to be here.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, you know, if you wanted to dig into the weeds with this philosophically, I'm not sure you'll make a school better by taking money from them. I don't think there's a whole lot of rationale to that, but I, but I think you're right. Being the best we can be at all times is what our focus will be. And we do have, if Mr. Sudol makes it back from the game, some education data from our elementaries that, that shows that people are going to improve each other with that.
But like you said, I think it's really like Jay was saying, I don't think people out in the public realize. I mean, I think when this came up, everybody was like, well, where's this coming from? But it doesn't apply. I mean, we have, you know, certainly have a private school in our district too, but it doesn't, as is, the way it stands, it doesn't apply to.
As is, and I think, you know, if you, if you ask the governor, the background behind it, it's to give kids an opportunity who are in failing district, you know, failing school. And, you know, I guess I could, I could probably support that idea. I think supporting the school struggling is also a important part of that. So I, I think that's where it was driven from, which again, wouldn't impact us. The last legislative piece I had, and we, SSA State Supplemental Aid. There has, since I wrote this, actually been a couple of proposals that have went forth, one in the House and one in the Senate. One of those proposals is 2.2% and then one of them is 2.5. Governor Reynolds proposed 2.5 in her budget to start the session. Last year we got 2.3%, a little bit of history on that from 2000 to 2010. We grew an average of 3.27 per year. Since then, the average is less than two. That, that impacts us, you know, quite a bit. And actually, this, this board has had to make tough decisions when, when financially things get, get difficult. And we just haven't kept up with school funding at the level that's probably needed to keep things in place. Now, this board has also done a really good job of making decisions to balance so that we can operate with our, our current offerings and our current opportunities for kids. But supplemental state aid is very, very important to us. 2.5 for us is $25,000 more than 2.2. It's, it's a big deal. So we're, and some of that has to do with budget guarantee. We had, we had less certified students this year, so we wouldn't be on budget guarantee. But if that number's high enough, then we would. That affects our taxpayers and that taxpayers are the ones who cover a budget guarantee, your local taxpayers. Whereas if it came from state supplemental aid, it wouldn't. So it, it would be beneficial not only to our students and to our districts, but the taxpayers in our district state supplemental aid to be above 2.5%. Mary Beth and I have started to work on and develop our certified budget for next year. We, we went through it, we've been all the way through it once, certified it. In March, we'll give a financial update to include a complete proposed budget that we'll then approve at our April board meeting. Last year we approved the tax rate of 1069. I know when Mary Beth and I built the budget last week, we were at 1070. So we, we do certainly feel we'll be within a penny of, of where we are last year. And that's, that's good. And that's where we should be. We've been visiting the hiring process over the past few weeks. Later on in the meeting, we'll have recommendations for a new first grade teacher, a new high school science teacher, a new fourth grade teacher, halftime elementary art, and a .25 high school tag teacher. We've also conducted first round interviews and screening for our seven candidates for the Director of Teaching and Learning. We'll have four finalists onsite this Friday, February 12th. We're excited about that. Vaccine, we had a, a number of staff members who were interested in receiving it. I have in our report 34 received it. It was much more than that once we got, you know, we got more allotment is what happened in the county. So we, I don't know what our total number was, but I'm sure it's most of those 165 received their vaccination in the last week. In the financial statements, I, I did give you guys a paper copy, just so you have it right there and it's easy to, to get to. I'll go through those so you're not going to show me exactly what I'm talking about. I'm hoping that we can just give you these in pretty simple form, so it's something you can look at. I highlighted, we have four boxes in yellow. At the top, it's our total revenues and so the, the top, right? Our, our revenues to date are a little over $9 million, 49% of what we're expecting to get this year. Last year at this time, they were 8.8, which was 50%. So our revenues are up, which is expected and anticipated. Our expenditures, which are the bottom two yellow boxes, our expenditures to date are 8.2 million, which is about 47%. Last year, 7.6 million, 44%. That change in expenditure would be somewhat in COVID related, not, not entirely, but certainly we have additional COVID expenses this year that didn't exist last year. But you'll see in green, we are still projected to end the year with a over $700,000 surplus. Not exactly sure if it'll end up that high, but projections, I think are pretty accurate program that we're using right now. The second document is just a revenue dashboard, pretty simple. At the top, there's nice engages. The second one in blue, that's our actual, actual year to date revenues. We've received 49% of our revenues to date. The box below that I think is valuable information. Where's that money coming from? Property taxes, our local property taxes have, we've received over 3.8 million of that so far. State Foundation Aid, we've received over 2.4 million of that so far. You guys, we've talked a lot about how that's the, the bucket's going to get filled either way. And we are, we live in a property rich district, so we receive more of our funding from local property taxes. If we were not a property rich district, we would receive more of our funding from state foundation aid. So it's just kind of a yo-yo there. That's a pretty good illustration of that. The last document, just general fund summary and some key measures to the general fund. This is all through January, so it's up to date. Couple of things to highlight here. From the top at the very far right, it's got FY21 projected. And the second line down is our projected total expenditure, 17.6 million. If you go down to the bottom set of boxes, under the black FY22 projected, it's got our revenue of 18.3 projected. So again, I showed earlier in a sheet, we're anticipating a $700,000 surplus. You can see it there based on our revenues and expenses. These are not just projected or budget items. This is all based off what we are actually doing per month. Mary Beth votes all of that into our forecast program to create these models, which are, are very accurate because of that.
This is off Forecast Five stuff.
It is, yeah. Any questions on any of those? I wanted to give you those sheets so you can have them. There's certainly more information in those than what I just gave you. I think it's easier to flip back through there at any time if you have a question. You can have that stuff right there.
Thank you very much. Having it monthly, so I've been wanting to keep up with that. Anything else, Joe?
No.
You're okay. All right. We will then move on to administrative report. Brad, Mr. Sudol not back yet?
Yeah, they had a middle school game that got rescheduled for tonight in Fort Dodge, so we knew that he may not be back and we will move his elementary report to.
We'll, we'll keep following the agenda if he pops in. We do always put him back, let him give us the report. So go on to new business. The resolution to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
We did approve our instructional support levy earlier in the fall. And we had some wording that we didn't have quite right and we want to make sure we get it right so we get that full funding. Okay, so there's, there's seven different points here. We're really doing three, three different things with our resolution tonight. The first thing we are doing is we are rescinding our resolution that we passed earlier in the fall. So the resolution that authorized participation in the instructional support program will be rescinded tonight. Second thing we're going to do is we are going to authorize our involvement in this instructional program, like, like we have done before. And the third thing we're going to do is then set the public hearing for that date. And those are all listed in that resolution that I, I linked to the agenda. So what we need tonight then is just simply the resolution to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
See it kind of written there in the.
It's also just the blue agenda item.
I will motion to, you just closed it.
Right there.
Do we need to say it?
Right there.
Resolution to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
Second that. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other further discussion or comments? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. It's a roll.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Martell? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Limbaugh?
Yes.
Loigie?
Yes.
Newgin?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. Do you want to continue forward or give Brad a little time or do you want to?
Mr. Sudol, you ready to roll? Sure.
Okay, all right. Well, we kind of just went by you by one, Mr. Sudol, but we'll bring you back to the podium and discuss administrative reports.
All right, so in your packets, Mr. Carter, if you may, I put that, may I flip through a few things on there? In your packet are the Fastbridge scores that compare kind of our fall to winter. As you can go through and you can look at the scores. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that are default assessment that we report to the state. Those tests there. So for example, in kindergarten and first grade, we report out on early math, which would be our composite score. And that is 14 subtests that are given by the teacher when they meet one-on-one with them. The A math and A reading, that's an adaptive test score. And those scores then are, that test is taken and adapts wherever the kids' needs are and where they're at. It's about 30 questions that the kids take with that. The CVM test, that is a curriculum based measurement. When you look in there, when you can scroll through, look at your things, that is a word reading efficiency test. So basically it's a one-minute timing. Kids read it and then are scored on how they're fluent, how fluent they are when they read. Each assessment has benchmarks that they're, they need to meet throughout the year. So then we have what's is persistently at risk, that would be the kids that are, you know, a little bit more that are struggling with it. Then we have our at-risk and then we have our on-target kids. As you can see, when you scroll through and look this on your computers or up up front there, the yellow ones are the highlighted ones. I also have on there pass scores of from past years as well too, to see where we compare for past years, as you can see with COVID too, to see how things affected us with that. The fall to.
In this one right here, Brad, that we have on the screen.
Yep.
This is the kindergarten literacy composite.
Yes.
Which we scored in the winter, 82% of our kids.
82% of our kids met benchmark.
Yep.
So.
In comparison to last year, it was 84?
Yes.
84, 82, 89. So not as high as last year, but we are closing the gap.
Yes. And as you can see, one of the, probably the biggest concerns when you look at scores with this, and the teachers are aware of it, is our first grade scores right there. You see it's 53%. Where compared to other years, we were not at that percentage. You know, being off in March, April, May was huge for that grade level. That's across the state and as you can see, there's another chart in here that I've linked to compare us with five other schools. And they're in the same ballpark when you look at scores. That March, winter, spring, or March, April, you know, March, April, May was huge for that grade level. And I, and I believe a lot of the reason is because those kids are learning to read. Whereas in our other kids, when we weren't at school, you know, in the springtime, they don't, they can read and learn. Those kids are learning to read and need that explicit instruction that we just were not able to give to them when we had to close last spring.
Yeah, so that, he gives a really good point of why we think it's like that. So this is comparing, now we have 54% of our first graders meeting benchmark. At school, we compared in the area of 48, another one 33, another one 61, another one 52, another one 54. Certainly those aren't numbers we want, but it's the, the loss of time for someone who's learning to read from kindergarten to first is, is critical.
And I know when I got that score, I, you know, this, I was concerned about it, looking at, do we need to change what we're doing? And I sent some texts out to some other principals and one of the principals texts me back and said, I'm glad you asked that because we're seeing the same thing with our scores. So that's when I started looking at, let's compare this to what we are, so to some area schools as well. You know, one of the things the teachers do is they take that as a challenge. Go ahead.
At their winter, if you look at our fall compared to our winter, it looks like some of the other schools gained a bunch. Or I guess one school dropped, but I guess it's not all the schools, but.
Yeah, they, you know, this school, for this school, for example, really close, really close the gap quite a bit. This column here, which I don't think you've talked about that yet.
No.
Explain what this growth column means.
So that fall to winter growth, what that is, is the expected growth according to the test, what a kid would need to make then fall to winter. So if you go to, there's a rate of achievement chart there on here that I've linked on there too. So this chart here, and this is just a sample, I didn't put kids' names in or anything like that. But as you can see in the side there, I just need to change my contacts, but the fall score there, you can see the benchmark in the middle, their fall score, what the benchmark would be, and then their winner's score, what the benchmark would be. If they're in the red, that would mean that those kids didn't make enough expected growth. They made growth, but they just didn't make the expected growth we wanted to see. Green is they made expected growth and more. Yellow would mean that they made their right, their parallel where we want it to be right now. So each teacher has a class, their class is input into this. And we look at that and we break that data down to see, okay, what do we do? These kids are persistently at risk. What interventions can we provide to those kids at this time to really target where those needs are at?
This expected rate of, of growth is really, really important. This is really the, the measurement that matters because Jay can be at benchmark and not be growing at the expected rate. And we, that's one of the things we're measured on in our accountability and we should be. And you'll, you'll see a school who ha, may have high levels of meeting benchmark, but they're not growing at really expected rates.
So is, is a child that's meeting benchmarks, is their expected growth smaller than those that are not meeting benchmark?
Yes, that, uh, well, yeah, it probably would be.
I mean, I just.
But it's, you know, what starts to happen is, you know, you have a child who has tremendous exposure maybe at home. You know, they're going to start out higher, but then we're not growing them, we're not continuing to grow and they start to flatline. You know, and that's why, you know, it doesn't matter if we're talking about our highest kids or lowest kids or anyone in between. We still need to continue to grow and, and develop and that's what we really want to measure and pay the closest attention to.
Yeah, exactly. And one of the things we do each week is kids that are persistently at risk and at risk, we progress monitors. So to see that graph, are we going in the right direction? Are we growing? If we're not, how do we change instruction for those kids so we do help them grow?
You know, I think this one here, comparing an individual child against themselves is much more important than comparing a class to a class. Because there you're comparing half the workers. You know, I think this data is, is invaluable in terms of what they need to work on and so on and so forth. When do teachers have the time to look through this? Are they given time throughout the year, throughout, you know, to look, really break this down and look through and analyze this data?
Yeah, actually our, our last staff development, our last early out is when we broke down. Teachers then, as you can see, there's another thing that I shared in there too, that you can look at later on if you want. But they're, they need to list down those kids that are persistently at risk, list down the interventions, list down the diagnostic data that they're going to use then with those kids to work with them. And then if they're not at, also another thing is the state has, if you're not at 60% with your classroom, you have to have a class-wide intervention. Well, we've talked as a staff that that's not going to help close our gap though. So we need to make sure, we set our bar at 70% to make sure that if we don't have 70% of our kids at benchmark, that we have a class-wide plus interventions for those individual kids as well too.
Okay, they're silenced.
No, I just think, you know, like I talked about that first grade, I think that's important, but also it's kind of a comparison right now with different schools around the area. So, you know, we're looking at how we can help those kids and help close that gap the best we can in every way.
One thing I've asked the principals to do over the last three weeks is think about, you know, we, we are receiving federal money. You know, how can we put this towards, towards this, towards our achievement? What can we do, whether it's ramped up summer schools, intervention programs? What can it be for us to continue to close this? And they're, they're developing ideas, developing plans. I think that's the, the best use of that money to put it to our kids, to their living, right, to their achievements.
Any other questions for Mr. Sudol? Mr. Sudol, thank you then.
I thank you.
Keep us updated as progress moves forward.
Rodney, can we, can we circle back up to the end of the year and look at the spring data? We don't have to have necessarily a presentation from Brad. Or they, we don't have to have necessarily a presentation from Brad, but it'd be interesting for us to look at, for us to circle back and look at that.
I bet we have Mrs. Schutcher probably scheduled.
I think she's scheduled for later on this, she should be happy to come in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we come back to that, once we get our, our screen, our spring screen.
Well, it'll give us an idea, too, of where we're headed and how we plan to put a summer school, whether it's, what is it?
Thank you.
Good, good thought, Jay, thank you. All right, we'll move back to new business, and I think we're at B, set the time and, set date and time for public hearing.
Yeah, we need to set the date and time, which would be March 8, 2021, at 7:00 PM for the public hearing to approve the school calendar. I've been working with our advisory council on that, and we, we have a draft that we're ready to bring, bring forward for approval.
So we just set it beginning at 7:00 PM?
We'll motion to set the time for the public hearing to approve the school calendar for 7:00 PM, March 8th, before our regular March board meeting.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll do a second to the motion.
Thanks, Tom. Motion and a second, any further questions?
So will we approve it that same night, then, or...
Yes, we will.
Have the public hearing, and then later in the agenda. All right, any question, any other question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approve the title, night plan.
You remember back in October, October, we approved Board Policy 106, which was our discrimination and harassment based on sex is prohibited policy. There were some changes in federal Title IX law that we had to update that policy. Part of the changes were that we had to create a Title IX manual. So we've created that in collaboration with Laverne, another area that we're combining together. I've linked the manual in there, so what we're doing tonight is approving our Title IX Sexual Harassment Procedures Manual. In this manual, John Hezier, Laverne Superintendent, is the Title IX Coordinator. I am the Title IX Decision Maker, and Jill Schutcher is the Title IX Investigator. Those are all three separate parts that we had to all go and get trained on. Then in conjunction, I, I'm also the decision maker in Laverne. Jill is also, also the investigator in Laverne, and John is also the coordinator in Laverne. So rather than us getting trained in multiple ways to do multiple jobs, this was, this was the recommended way for districts to do it, and it works good to collaborate with Laverne to do that.
Any questions? All right, hearing done, begin the motion and a second for approval.
I motion to approve the Title IX plan.
Okay, thanks, Tom, we have a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Gloria, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Don't believe there was any, but all in favor, then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the final reading of our 300 series.
The 300 series is related to the administration in the district. I went through that, also conferred that with the Iowa Association of School Boards recommendations. I don't see any changes that need to be made to the 300 series at this time. However, next year, there will be. The evaluation standards for all administrators are going to change. They've already adopted them, they just haven't been approved yet. So that's one of the pieces of the 300 series, is the Iowa school standards of learning are going to change, and then we'll have to make that adjustment in our 300 series. But I do recommend the 300 series as it is.
Any questions? All right, then we need a motion and a second for this also.
I make a motion to approve the 300 series.
Thanks, Gloria, is there a second?
No, a second.
Thanks, Brad. All, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good to see the open enrollments.
I'm going to do this in two parts, but we can do it as one approval. We have three open enrollments into the district for this year. They are, two of them from the Westbin Mallard to Algonquin District, one from Laverne to Algonquin. Then we also have four new open enrollments for next year, all again into our district, one from Laverne, three from Westbin Mallard to Algonquin.
Those 2021 students, are they already here?
They are not.
They are not there.
But they, they probably want to be, they're waiting for approval. I've contacted their resident district, which they don't go to school in also. That's where this one becomes a little bit different. And they verbally has, have told us they would approve it if we did also.
All right, any other questions on open enrollment? As you know, you will approve both the 2021 and 2122 applications. So we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, both, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, personnel, who are the new contracts?
We have nine new contracts this month. Lindsay Carter for ninth grade softball, Noah Arrowood for high school science, replacing Mr. Phil Stein, who is retiring. Becca Brinkley, halftime elementary art, replacing Mary Haber Camp, who is retiring. Missy Berkey, first grade teacher. Missy is currently teaching English Language Arts in our middle school. She's replacing Jill Cook, who retired. Ashley Nichols, that's a .5, .25 high school tag, replacing part of Mrs. Haber Camp, who's retiring. And then Drew Severson for our middle school cross-country. Ben Kern as a volunteer assistant golf coach. Julia Birdie as a teacher associate in the middle school, who've actually been working short, two associates in the middle school for some time, making that work as best we can. We, we need to make a change there, and it's a, it's a part-time change there for 30, one hours a week. And then Emily Cook, fourth grade teacher, replacing Mrs. Gerhart, who is also retiring.
Like you said, we seem to be doing very well on our early retirements, replacing them early, so that's good to see, and some former Algonquinians. Currently, Ashley's teaching halftime middle school math, is that correct?
She is.
So we're going to, what's...
So what we have done is, we've got some reductions, you'll see in there. So she's going to move full-time to the high school, and we're going to hire her for full-time math, personally. We advertise it that way, we've got some candidates. And we'll, you know, James will have that, probably next year, he's...
Okay. All right, moving forward, then, we need a motion and a second for approval of new contracts.
Make a motion to approve the new contracts.
Thanks, Tom, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, a second.
Thanks, Brad. So we have a motion and a second. Approve the new personnel contracts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And along with that, we have a few resignations.
Yes, Drew Severson, who we just approved for middle school cross-country, from middle school football. Lisa Cassens and Mindy Spear from high school Quiz Bowl. Emily Drahe from food service. Stephanie Sanderson Sullivan, who is a teacher associate. Rick Adams from the Director of Buildings and Grounds, who, who applied, who has applied for the retirement program that we approved last month. Margot Adams, Central Services and prom sponsor, also who has applied for the retirement program. Carla Urtell, teacher associate. Deb Miller, teacher associate, both have applied for that. Those will be the four that will apply for the classified retirement this year. And then Wendy Zhao as our EL teacher associate. I did put in your, some of your information. Mr. Adams is in his 46th year in the district. Mrs. Adams, her 34th year in the district. Carla Urtell, 32nd year in the district. And Deb Miller, 25 years to the district. So tremendous longevity in what they, they go to the, to the district.
Okay, we need a motion for approval of the resignations.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Like you said, next, next month, remember that we will do the second of the superintendent evaluation. So plan on that at the end of, for, after our March meeting. At this point, if nothing else, we're, we're adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we are adjourned.